We open the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to their public worship stands, one nation under God, indivisible, by liberty and justice for all. Alright, this is our planning board meeting for February 6th. We are being recorded for YouTube and with the Whitman Anderson site. Community access site. Uh, the only thing on our main agenda tonight is the MBTA community overlay district. By law, I suppose. So I'll just go put out to anyone, have anything they'd like to say before we get going or anything. Well.
No, I got a real couple. Now, now, Mr. Chairman, I think we should discuss three things before we get into the body of the thing. One being, should it be the zoning board or the planning board, site planning review? Should we link 40B to or against it? And the third thing was, um, um, do we want to use modern purpose buildings?
Yeah.
I think those are the three main things. Because once you get into the nitty gritty of the thing, you can add some traffic takeaway.
Yes.
Agreed.
Yes.
Good points.
Attendance.
Oh, oh yeah, we'll just stay on the record, attendance tonight is myself, Adam Somerville, chairman.
Bob Kim, who?
Elaine Berger, co-chair.
Brenner, who?
Clerk.
Alright. Alright, so do I just? Well, we need to put Judy anyway still, but we should discuss what we want to discuss at another time, so.
Okay, well, I think probably one of the easiest things is the, uh, planning board, the zoning board to have, uh,
Who has?
Site plan review.
Who has the norm, we would have it in a housing development, right, John?
Yeah, the, in Pendleton, we've been zoning bylaws, zoning board, CBA is, does site plan review.
Sure, okay, sure.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say something like that.
By all means.
Alright. The impression I get is that we put this under the planning board, which we are the only town that doesn't do it. But when the original five or six men created the planning board, they did it specifically because they wanted them to concentrate on subdivision. And if we put this under them, then you're basically having a combination of the two, zoning and planning. And to do what they have in here, in here, you're either gonna have, you're gonna end up having two boards doing the same thing. And to do that, you're gonna need a full-time board, which means salaries and benefits, which you're never gonna get. And I think the worst mistake this board could make would be to put it under the, uh, the planning board. And I'll tell you why. Because at least Elaine probably knows, and I know Bob knows, uh, on the zoning board, you just can't get on the zoning board and say yes, yes, no, no. You have to look at it, you know? So it's gonna take time. So that means you're either gonna have two boards doing the same thing, or you're gonna have one board doing it. So it takes time for the people on the zoning board to really get comfortable. And I'd just like to read, read what I've looked up. I have this, the town clerk gave me about 15 years ago. Our current zoning board, alright, we have one member who's an attorney, and he specializes in zoning. And he happened to be the chairman. Now, he's been on that board 27 years. We have another member, that's the vice chairman, he's been on it 23 years. Another member that's been on it for 19 years. And we have another member that's been on it 39 years. Then we have a, a, a member, an associate member, that's been on it 16 years, and he's been an associate member. We also have a former, uh, building commissioner, who was the building commissioner for about 25 years, so he's ultimately qualified. And then we also have another associate member that's been on approximately a year, I'm not sure how long. And in my opinion, he needs to be a full-time member of that board when he gets the first chance, because he finds what he does fantastic. So he's probably gonna end up being my replacement at some point. Because I don't think any of the other people on there are gonna be the leader very soon.
I know two guys, uh.
So that's why I think it would be very bad for this. And like I say, if you have a full-time board, they're gonna have to be paid. They're not gonna do it full-time for nothing, so you're talking pay and benefits.
Yeah.
So that's my reason for saying that I think the worst thing this board can do would be to put this under the planning board. The planning board's supposed to take care of subdivision. In around the year 2000, the planning board at that time wrote a whole new, uh, uh, emblem, you know, book for the, for the planning board. And that spelled it out. But that's why they separated, because the guys that originally created that board did it that way, because they thought it was important that the, that the planning board had the separation so they could concentrate on it.
Yeah.
Just a women unlucky, though, that's for five years, because of COVID, there's very little subdivision going on. But that will come back.
Sure. I couldn't agree more, as long as John agrees with that, because it should go to the zoning board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, with all due respect to the previous speaker, we have a very tended zoning board that offered change. Oh, the majority of the zoning board is over 70 years old.
Yeah.
No, sir, yeah. There's only one other person that's, uh, over 70. He might be sitting there. Besides, because nobody else is over 70.
I am.
Seem to be.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, what I'm just saying, yeah.
But during the alternate, I'm sorry.
No, but the thing is, my friend, you have to talk the board as an entity and not as individuals. Same as you go to the town meeting, you argue for the pay raises for the position, not the individual. That being said, secondly, one thing to look at is the zoning, if the planning board had site plan review, and the zoning board had, um, pay raises, anytime you get a bit, if the zoning, the planning board has something that needed a variance, now you have a second set of eyes to go and look at the project. It's, you know, there's two ways of looking at both sides.
Well.
But just because it's been historical, yet this meeting has to stay that way.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, I'm very surprised, being on the planning board, a little power the planning board has here. But that's my point.
But if you, if you do what you said, then you're gonna have to write a new bylaw for the zoning board, because you're gonna be taking.
No, there's, there's no change in the bylaw other than this section right in there has to be, I believe, a, do we have like a rules and regulations for the zoning board, like they do for the planning board?
Limited, not, you have rules and regulations because you're, you're defining streets and all kinds of stuff. As are more procedural, you know, how many copies of a plan or whatever.
Yeah, but in here it says it, there has to be something specific to this, uh, what he said, thank you.
Well, we would have, if you know you had site plan approval of, or whatever, we would see a recommendation on it anyway, right? John, Ron, no?
Yeah, I'm sure it would still go to you like, you know, like Alie.
Usually, variances and stuff. Brennan?
Can you, can you read the, um, the text that you're, that you're pulling this? I, I just wanna make sure I'm hearing what I'm hearing right. Because I've heard Wayne say, planning board, planning board, planning board. I'm not sure which he meant would take and which would give, so.
Yeah, I think Wayne is saying that everything should be under the zoning board.
Okay.
And I'm saying we should take, at least consider it, uh, either way. I'm not overly one way or the other, but I think when you discuss things like this, you discuss both sides of the issue. Okay? I mean, this isn't, this, hello?
Hello.
This isn't.
Is this the preservation? Or the?
The preservation committee met at 5:30.
Okay.
Oh, the preservation committee.
Do you mean conservation?
Conservation?
No, I mean conservation.
Cancelled it.
Yes, but, oh, so you're?
With the planning board.
Planning board.
Well, I guess we were gonna work in here. Because we, we didn't have a forum, so, okay.
Well, well.
If you guys want to recess, I could unlock the room over there and have them.
Well, no, we'll be making noise because we're in our file cabinet.
We can move the other room.
Well, uh.
I don't think we should, because we have.
Well, we, we already moved to that, it's supposed to be over there, we just want a sign on the board.
If they're just gonna go into files, is it gonna be an issue?
It's gonna make noise. Yeah, because we're pulling.
Well, it's, pardon me, but isn't a public meeting more important than a poll?
Yes, I didn't know this.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Because this was our scheduled plan, though we didn't have a forum, we were just gonna work, so, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I have a solution for them.
We're supposed to be over there anyway, but we still want to stay there because, anyway.
We didn't, we didn't cancel our meeting. It's our playtime.
So what do we, uh, we'll show how we wanna handle this.
John has, oh, John, okay.
Just giving input.
No, absolutely. Um, I couldn't seem to receive the Brennan.
No.
Brennan. Gotta do that a million times.
Um, most towns, you know, apart from like statewide, and, and, you know, famous for the ballot group, they stuck in planning board there because the majority of towns, planning board does site plan review, and often special permit as well, probably more planning board than zoning board for special permit. And zoning board does variances. It's been set up in Whitman that zoning board does all three, essentially. Um, I don't think it's worked pretty well, and I think it's, I think it works well for applicants. Because I, you know, I can remember working, you know, as the town attorney with towns with zoning board and planning board, or loggerheads, or, or even, even if they're not, the applicant goes to the planning board, you know, gets a special permit, but knows they need a variance, and they go to the zoning board, and the zoning board won't give the variance. And now they gotta change the plan, go back to the planning board, and it just, it just makes life more difficult for the, for the applicant. And particularly if, if, since they're only proposing to have site plan review be under the planning board for this, and not for everything else, that doesn't make any sense.
Right.
I mean, if you're gonna change it.
I agree with that, it doesn't make sense.
So, you know what? And the objective of getting this thing through town meeting with, you know, the least, making it seem at least that this is the least amount of change possible, to me, that's a reason to leave it with the zoning board. If, you know, at another time, you wanna consider whether for the entire zoning bylaw, site plan review should be under the planning board rather than the zoning board, you know? Okay, but I think it just raises a whole other issue here, and to have it be one for one, and, you know, depending, you know, if you put up a multifamily building under this bylaw, you go to the planning board, but if you're doing it under the regular bylaw, you go to the zoning board, might even have some game playing going on by developer, depending which way they think would, it, I just think we should, it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Let me, and I, there was a 40B or 40A, with site plan review go to the zoning.
40B, it does, but under state law.
Okay.
That's not even, it's not.
This day, in my opinion, it should be considered the same as a 40A or 40B. If that goes to you, then why wouldn't this? That's all I see it.
And, yeah, and the.
We kind of look at the same thing.
And the 40B law is kind of an outlier, because it goes right to the zoning board, so they can jump on this.
But you actually raise a good point, because the reason 40B does that is it provides one-stop shopping.
Yeah.
You know, it's trying to make it easier to build the housing. Well, if we're gonna do that here, that's another, again, you're, for this, for these projects, it'd be one-stop shopping, whichever way you do it, because site plan review is the only approval they need. Um, though conceivably, you know, they might, they might need a variance, you know, they, they might, like everything that's in here, but they need one little tweak of the bylaw. They've got every right to go to the zoning board for variance. So it's, it still could wind up being two boards, why, why not keep it simple and make it one board?
Alright.
Do we have a consensus?
I think we leave it the way it is.
Until the zoning board.
That's a great consensus.
Oh, yeah, I?
I, I think, I, I don't have a.
Okay.
Also, yes, I know, I, I like to see boards get paid, so, you know, that's the way that I'm gonna swear.
But once this is up and started, we can always change our mind.
Yep.
I mean, I'm not dead set against it, just reading this stuff, it sounded like we were gonna have to have two boards.
Yeah.
And like John said, I think we're gonna be clashing.
So the consensus is we're gonna go with the site plan review to the zoning.
Yeah, at least, at least to begin with.
Yeah.
Then we, a year, two years later, we can revisit this, you know?
Yeah.
But I, I would, I would honestly say I agree with Bob Kim, where you can't look at, like, who's on the board now, you're gonna be.
Right.
For the future.
But like you said, make room, why fix it?
Yeah.
Melissa?
Just so I know, do we have to make motions on changes, or just, okay, just so I?
It's a consensus.
Yeah, so, but they go just to make a note to assign it.
Yeah.
Once we get a complete package, then you have to vote on the package.
Yeah, when Judy gets to you, that's when you have to tell her.
Yeah.
But at least we have these discussions the other way beforehand.
Yeah.
I would personally like to keep our hand on the wheel for this, um, because this is different. But I will, um, um, I'm.
It's all gonna come back around. Alright, so what was next? Mixed use?
Mixed use. Now, we'll think of, in here, this here mixed use can be most anything, from a dental office to, uh, most everything except marijuana, please, yeah.
A dogal team, man.
Now, the thing is, depends on the type of development we're gonna get into. If we're gonna get into a development, say on this street, they have a building that's set back 16, three stories, two apartments above, retail on the bottom, it might make sense to have a mixed use. But if we get in where a K and K asphalt is, and somebody puts in, uh, for a better thing, like the condos that we just put in on Harvin Street, a development like that, we really don't want a mixed use in that type of an area. And I think some of the things that, when you reach for here for the mixed use, it's looking like Whitman has a mixed use right now along, uh, South Avenue out here. You got retail on the bottom, the spurs right up against the street, that's a nice mixed use. Another thing they're saying in the, uh, proposed by law is, if you do have a mixed use, it's gonna be on the street. Well, somebody has two houses, two buildings going deep into the lot, say 150 feet, you got 90 feet between them for parking and the 24 foot, so on and so forth, why can't you have a retail down the middle? So it's just something to consider, do we want more multi-use, or do you wanna limit multi-use, or you wanna put some type of, uh, limited use? I'm 100% against it. I want residential.
My thing I would say is if you look at a lot of the buildings that are being built now, and the things that are being built, there's a lot of mixed use on the main roads, but not so much on the side street. But if something is facing up Route 58 or Route 18 or something, you might consider it, but that could fall aside.
But that's, we don't have it, the, we have very, only Essex Street is basically the
Correct.
main true fair that would have this type of.
Right, well, let's help that out a little bit here and there.
Yeah.
So what do I do?
Yes, the comment, when I looked at, I was, yeah, I mean, I was, well, because I thought the state didn't even want you to have, you know, that they were kind of grudgingly allowing you to have mixed use.
Yeah.
That wasn't really what the state wanted for this. But if there was some way to say that, um, if the mixed, if the mixed, if the MBTA community is building, if the, if, if the project is within the general business district where a mixed use development would now be allowed, that you could do it there, which is essentially just a one south half.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that's feasible, I don't know how you draft that, that's something to ask Judy.
Yeah.
I could see that. But otherwise, I, I think you're just, again, you're making it more complicated than it needs to be.
So convenience store in the far back building, or the development, would be kind of crazy.
And it affects the dynamic of housing, to have a business in the same loss
I agree.
that you live in. I don't know with the extension of how long A, B, C, or D has to stay within X below the median, but having a business in the building can be detrimental or positive to that and change rents. And there's no saying that the business owner might not be involved in the building for his own gain. 100% against it.
Let me ask this, though. If we did say no mixed use allowed, you know, that somebody put a building in and come to the appeals board and say, well, I'd like to, what about if I just put a one, you know, building here? And just, you know?
Well, and then the other possibility is, uh, if the development's over 100 units, uh, maybe you would allow something with a daycare, a little convenience store, something like that. Plus then, 5% of the development could be retail space. You know, that, like I said, that allows for daycare, which I think is.
Essentially accessory to the development, not
Yeah.
an outward fit, not for the, you know, aimed at the general community.
Yeah, a lot, well, hopefully they've been in large.
I would say a limited mixed use, but we might.
I would leave the mixed use in the mixed use, build houses, because I think the intention on this when it was first drafted, and I know that kind of said they could use it now, according to John, I think their intention was to get more housing close to the.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I agree. You know, if it does, like you said.
On, like John said, in the one south half, where they can have the mixed use.
Yeah.
For our town shape, basically.
Yeah.
It's different than if it was being, if we were putting this out on the end of Franklin Street or something.
Yeah. So could we worry, no mix, no mixed use unless it overlays into the general business? Or do I just eliminate it totally?
Well, it overlays whether we already have the mixed use.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, that's the other, but looking at is, by golly, if they want a mixed use building, they don't need to use this.
Yeah, just go the other way.
Right.
Okay.
So it's, you, you should be cockeyed at anyone who goes, I wanna go miss mixed use right here. Because once, once one person does it, then it goes, okay, the planning board said, okay, you can do 3% of your areas or whatever.
Well, yeah, why not four?
Yeah.
Nope.
Alright, so no mixed use in the MBTA community overlay district? Does that seem like consensus?
Yeah, I think it's a good thing that it's 302.
Yeah, yeah, ask her why, you know, what, what other towns are doing, and why? Because I think the point Bob makes about, there's some sensory uses to the housing.
There's a big development, you know?
Yeah, I could see a point to it.
Alright, the next one.
Sometimes you have medical, you know, medical offices.
Yeah, small clinic or whatever that, you know, a daycare. But that would, the developers know that. We hope, we hope they know that.
Well, even unless they talk about, um, some space use that have available in these developments, so other than residential, you know, like they needed, I don't know, maintenance.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Maintenance of an office or a development of 100 units.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Even some would have little function halls.
Well, that's what I, that's what I was saying.
Some places like that, they could develop, yeah.
Well, we have a function hall that I probably will sell.
Yeah.
But it can't be rented out. It's only for the groups of people that live.
Yeah, because this is like arts and crafts studio, bank business, that's useless. With childcare or a medical, dental, could be possible if you need to be. But if you really want a convenience store, and, you know, 7-Eleven pop up underneath or.
Well, then, then in this town, you're gonna smack into, well, everywhere, they're supposed to be right next to the sidewalk, well, to bug claim, they build what's next to Auburnville Way, it's not gonna work.
Yeah, right.
We don't want that close to the street and that area with those houses, you know?
Yeah, well, this, you have the way to shoot.
Alright, what was next, we wanna say, well?
40B. That's a topic. Uh, the purpose for doing this is to get additional housing. You don't need the 40B requirements as it is. You put in a lot more additional housing, somebody can come in and say that we wanna take this big parcel, one inch off of it. But then going back, and here it says, if you have 10 units, you have to have 10% of 40B.
Which would be one unit.
One unit out of 10, so if you have, and it still wasn't due, you're gonna go against the department for the town, because you buy a 10, you put one in. Uh, and the other thing is authority on the, um, 40B, how long does it last? We had a development in Draytree, uh, it was called Madwick Village. It was a, it's a tough place, but, uh, the developer, after 20 years, when he paid off the federal loans to buy it, went to market rate. So what good is do the town, nothing, to have the 40B? And then other, I know of a person in, um, Hingham, he has a car that he paid $600,000 for it. The person next door to him bought the 40B, he had $400,000. My friend's paying $100 a month, uh, car payment fee, and he's got somebody next to him paying $300 a month, because it's a 40B unit. And who wants to say that in the future, the person that bought that 40B unit doesn't, they put hell a lot of money on it? But, um, I, this is a tough question, because we wanna get low-income housing here. But how do you do it in development like this? Without doing straddling the 40B issue? This is a question.
I that's over my head, that's above my pay grade, so I don't even know where you can start with that question, so. I'll just, I have no problem saying, I don't know.
I wanna see what John, I have to say what I have a question, like, with. Okay, then, forgive me for being a little ignorant on that piece, but what, now, the 40B allocation, it has to be 10% of the 40R?
On here, if you do a per-list development, it has to be 10% of the units that you build, so if you build 10 units, you have to have one 40B, you build a.
It's not really 40B, I mean, I guess better to say affordable unit.
Affordable, yeah, okay, and I, I mean, that's why, yeah, like I'm hearing 40B.
Yeah, no, this isn't 40B, but it's the principle of.
The principle.
The principle of, of affordable housing, if, to get above 10%, and if we're way below that, we're gonna make them have to use at least 20% affordable housing, so we can at least get our numbers up? I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
But only about 3%.
That's what I'm saying, we're on the lowest, right?
We're at 3, we're at 3.
We wanna increase that, we gotta, anything that's built has to be more than 10, you know, we're gonna go up.
This is something.
Well, I don't think that, I think we should put something in it, that some affordable housing, but I don't think this particular development or area has to get us to the 10.
Right, no, right, right.
But since.
We should be getting to the 10 in other places.
If you have a 10% requirement, then at least you're not making things worse, I think.
Right.
Right, yeah.
I mean, something to ask Judy about, the, the problem is, when you go, even 10%, I guess I'd ask her, is that being allowed? Um, when you, like, a 40B is 25%, but the reason they're allowed to be 25% is they're allowed to drastically overbuild, and so they offset the, what they're losing on those affordable units by making more market rate units. And the problem when you get, and even Boston's running into this, when you start going above 10%, you reach a point where the developer says, forget it, I end up this building, and that, you know, you haven't gained anything. I'm, I'm of two minds about it, I mean, I think there's a good argument to say, let's, let's require 10% because we don't wanna make it even worse than we are. And by the way, passing this doesn't, doesn't exempt us from 40B. Somebody could still put a 40B development elsewhere in town. My hope is that with, with this, in our town, in all these other towns, building a 40B is complicated, it's legally complicated, it's financially complicated. If the developers have some other way to build multifamily housing, my thinking is you'll see, actually see fewer 40Bs. my thinking is, you'll see, actually see fewer 40Bs and more of this kind of thing.
And we wouldn't necessarily have to agree to 10 percent, would we? On this...
You're not going to get less people building something if you're forcing them to do something.
No, I, I understand that, oh, very. But this is saying 10 percent, but do we have to say 10 percent? Can we say 3 percent?
Oh, oh, you can, you can say zero, there's nothing, as far as I know, in the state required. Because the whole point of the state, you know, states been arguing is, we're not, we're not forcing affordable housing on you, this is just to allow developers to build market rate housing.
So my point is, that we have a 10 percent that we're supposed to need it separate of this project. And as a town, we've met 3 percent.
Yeah.
So what I'm proposing is, for this project, we ask for a modest section to be affordable housing. Not necessarily make it to the 10, or make it 10, maybe we say 3, or 2, or whatever.
At least in Bay.
We say something, so that maybe the developer will find a way to do something, and then help that 10 percent goal of ours, without it being all replaced. Because in reality, anywhere that something's built in the town, affordable housing should be a consideration. So it's like a baby step to try to get...
Is that possible to word it that way, of a modest percentage instead of a specific percentage, or you happen to make a...
We have to say a number, but...
Okay, I'll say a number.
John, on the 40Bs, don't they have to have 25 percent?
Right.
Yeah.
But it's sort of a quid pro quo, because they're being allowed to build somewhere that they wouldn't otherwise be allowed to build.
But the town, the town has to get it up to 10 percent overall.
Supposedly.
Worry about it.
I'm just saying, hey...
If you get up to 10 percent, then you're exempt from 40Bs.
Yes.
But there's no punishment for not getting to 10 percent.
Right, no, but you can't, you can't just do the 40B, do you?
Not practically, no.
But it's not likely somebody's going to come in, want to build a whole development 40B.
Right.
We've, we've...
We've got 45 in town.
Yeah, but...
But it is a good one.
So my point of that is, if we collectively say, let's do a small requirement for affordable housing, then you're not, you're not pulling out a developer, and you're not ignoring the need.
Yeah.
But the problem there is, if I say 3 percent, and I have a 10-unit building, do I round up or round it out?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you, say, let's say you say 5 percent to make it easier, then you're probably going to want to say, any development with more than 20 units. So now 5 percent is one unit.
Yeah. I, I just...
Then a lot of people will build 10-unit projects.
That's what the problem, that's one of the biggest problems with 40B, is that's actually a thing.
Okay.
Or build a nine-building, nine-one building.
But it shows that they've got our part to do something.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I mean, 10 units isn't worth it, you know?
So what do we, do we, what do we want, put for a number store? Do we want to use that, or do we...
Well, John, John mentioned something I didn't consider, is if we said, if you're building 20, you do 5? Is that what you said as an example?
No, I'm saying, if you build 20, if it was a 5 percent requirement, then you probably want to make it, in any development with over 20 units, the 5 percent applies. So that you get, you get one unit, so you don't deal with the fractional stuff, you don't want to...
Yeah, 3 was just a...
Yeah, no, no.
We could say, what if we said, so 5 out of 20, you're only going to get one unit? What if we, what if we said 2 percent, what would they be able to do?
Well, you'd have to...
Build 50 units, yeah, most of the...
You'd have one unit.
You get one unit.
Yeah, that's not worth it.
It's, well, could you say 10?
It's the purpose of doing it at all.
Yeah, I, I, I think probably stick with the 10 percent, it doesn't bother them.
Well, you could do if, you could do if it, under 20 units, 10 percent, over 20 units, 5 percent.
So this is a...
I don't know, just sum it up.
The shortest...
As this is right.
Yeah.
Every 10 units requires one.
Yes.
So if they build 50, they had to do 5.
In one development.
In one development.
And you can't subdivide it within 36 months.
Yeah, try to avoid people playing games like that.
So maybe the way it is is fine.
You, but you may lose some quality developers, because they don't want to do it for the income. Yeah, no, I'm just...
Yeah. I think if they're...
Oh, yeah, no.
If I think if we lose the developer for not wanting to do it, to hell with it. That's just there.
I think it's something to ask Judy, because she has...
Yeah.
Experience.
Decades of experience.
But 10 percent sounds good to me anyway.
She emailed, she should be here any minute.
Oh, fine, we're just going. All right, so that's our, our question for Judy. Our third question for Judy.
Well, that's, those are basic, others are...
Just basic.
Yeah, like, well, the first bit here, she says, do you want to add any fluff words?
Yeah, the vote for the, the whole conversation came down to that first page, and everything in it's all...
Yeah.
That she wrote down there.
Yeah. We're not done with the law this year.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, but Judy, this is the original, see, like, these are the questions here.
Keep it simple.
That she, that we had to pick through, which is pretty much outlined right here, these are what we put Bob outlined.
And that's, that's what...
I'm just saying, that we're...
You're doing this by with the state law, all these other objectives, yeah.
It's flawed.
Yeah. We probably would just enjoy people with talent, leaving them with...
Do we want to go section by section, does anybody have anything specific?
I just wanted to think about the, you know, what the fire code does for separation of buildings.
Hello?
Hi, this is the planning board.
Yes, Judy?
Yes.
How are you?
Sorry, a few minutes later, I was in the North Side phonehouse, we're getting back here.
That's not an easy thing. I go to Worcester a lot.
Do you, yeah?
It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Adam Summerville, Chairman.
Okay, great.
So it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
I'm Brendan. John?
I'm, I'm John Goldrosen, Judy.
Oh, hi!
I'm, I'm not on the planning board, I'm Chairman of the zoning board, but I've been participating in these discussions.
You're as crazy as I am.
Yeah, but you can pay for it.
So, hello, hi.
How are you today?
I'm fine.
Appreciate you coming.
You're happy to be here. So I don't know if what I gave you makes any sense at all.
It makes a lot of sense.
Oh, really? Oh, good. So this zoning is, it's tricky in some towns, because, you know, sometimes there aren't a lot of impediments in the rest of the zoning bylaw that would sort of stand in the way of creating a very simple overlay district. And in other cases, we have to really go through the bylaw and find places where there could be a conflict, and essentially exempt those sections, or exempt the overlay district from having to comply with them. So I really went through the zoning bylaws carefully as I could, and tried to identify those places, and just make it clear upfront. You know, it either doesn't have to comply with this, or, or it has to comply with this, except as modified, you know, here. So I was hoping it kind of made sense to you. The metrics in the, in the bylaw, like the dimensional regulations, are really right out of the modeling work that was done.
Well, we're thinking of, we've had three discussions already before you came in.
Yeah.
And we want to ask you a couple of questions about that.
Oh, please, yeah.
Then if we're going to go through section by section, and have some questions, and if you put us in, Charles, you have the expert group of creatures.
That is totally fine. Yeah, I mean, I, I figured we were probably, I, go through this section by section. I was just trying to give you an overview.
Yeah, do your thing, tell us what you want to say.
I'm totally fine, I mean, I think going through this section by section does make sense.
Yeah.
Because I have some questions for you folks as well.
Okay.
So, you wanted to ask me some questions, I think?
Well, we had three, three discussions before you came in.
Okay.
One was, so you're going to be the zoning board or the planning board, have control of the section review. It is basically, unless somebody else wants to take one personally.
No, no.
Basically, we want to leave it with the zoning board.
Okay.
We don't agree with it 100 percent, but it's working.
That's how I found us.
Some people have to go to the zoning, and planners have to go just to the zoning. So we want to leave it with the zoning, so you could picture, word, make all the changes.
So I wondered about that, because your existing, I think, site plan process is with the ZBA, correct?
Yes.
So, you know, and most of the times I work in, it's planning board does site plan reviews, EBA does a lot of the special permits, so I just impose my judgment on you, figuring if I got it wrong, you would tell me. But there's no prohibition against, the issue is just it's as a right, so as long as the ZBA understands that. Because sometimes...
We're already doing, I mean, we have, although, like in the multi-use overlay district that we have now, it says of right, and we just have site plan review when we do it.
So that's an easy switch.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And John's the Chairman of the zoning board, so it makes it very easy.
I have no idea who I was again. So this is cool, okay.
Okay, second thing was mix use.
Yes.
In...
Consensus.
Consensus, we think basically that this is supposed to be for housing, so should we really have mix use in housing? The only place that we would think about, part of our district, overlay is an area that lots of mix use as another overlay district, so to a lot of that district, but the rest of it, not mix use, because the thing is, we want to build housing.
Okay, so mix use can just come out. So some towns have been asking us to include that, I just did it, it can, it's just, that's an easy deletion.
We figure if it comes up with, with on the overlay and the general business, then we can leave it with that, but we just eliminate it for the most part.
But now, if we had a development of, say, 150 units, if somebody wanted to put a daycare within the unit, would that be something we acceptable?
Well, daycare is an exempt use under the zoning act anyway, so I'm concerned they can do it, but what will they...
Let's say, say a doctor's office, you know, so it's some larger, like London Hare, say, has a doctor's office, it has this, it has that.
So this time, it wouldn't allow you to do that, because it's not allowing any commercial uses on a mixed use basis, if you take mixed use out.
Yeah.
So that's just to be clear, I mean, if someone were doing, you know, work at home on like a home office basis, I mean, we could probably provide home occupation as accessory use. But I think you have to pretty much decide, do you want to allow commercial or not? And if you don't, then we should just leave it out.
Yeah.
And you could go with whatever your other existing mixed use provision is, and just leave it at that.
Yeah, I know they're a part of complex, we know a lot of businesses. You can work, as long as somebody doesn't come in and work with you.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's pretty typical.
So I think that's a good sense.
But would there be a way to allow just some uses that would be considered almost accessory? But like, no, they, but, you know, a doctor's office, something that basically serves the people in the development.
So here's the problem. I mean, you could do that and call it mixed use. We would need to write some mixed use regulations into this, that would make it clear the limited circumstances under which that could be done. You just have to be careful that you don't uncouple that from mixed use development. Because part of what you're trying to do here, I assume, is be able to take this to-town meeting on a simple majority vote.
Yes.
So if you start adding stuff in here that's not covered under the amendments to Section 5 of the zoning act that allows simple majority vote, you could have a problem. So mixed use is okay, if you want to really do it on almost like a de minimis basis, I can do that. I just didn't write it that way, but I can.
That's, what do you think?
I mean, even if they really write it, it's a sort of almost like an accessory type...
I agree, we're leaving it off.
My, yeah, I, I stand with just, just no mixed use.
Okay.
Yeah, there would be a possibility in the future, if somebody was sort of putting a really, think of that, that they could ask for a zoning change on, prevent the spot zoning.
No, I mean, you know, the whole spot zoning thing, people sometimes assume that if it's only benefiting one property, that makes it spot zoning, and that's not necessarily the case, there has to be a public benefit.
Yeah.
So cross that bridge when you come to it, but I would just say, don't overcomplicate this.
Yeah.
If you want to have limited mixed use, I can write it that way, if you think we should just take it out, I could do that too.
Yeah.
I just need direction.
Yeah. I vote for taking it up. That was, that was going to make it original, wait, Bob, Brendan?
Take it up.
Yeah, eliminate mix use.
Okay, that is totally fine.
What was the third?
40, not 40B, but low income housing.
Yes.
Percentage.
Percentage. If you're requiring a certain number, in what you're bringing, it's 10 percent over 10 units, 10 or more units, 10 percent. Is that going to prevent some decent developers from wanting to put in, a decent development from doing it? So now I've got 35 acres of town, that if I do more than 10 units, I've got to do lower income.
It could be a disincentive. I mean, I think developers who are doing multi-family housing, it's just what they do, they're pretty used to some kind of inclusionary zoning requirement, it's, it's very common out there. You're not required to have that in this bylaw.
Yeah.
I've included it because most towns are asking us to, but you do not have to have an affordability provision in here at all. I mean, one way you could think about it, you can leave it in here, you can take it out, or you can have a town, like an inclusionary zoning provision in your bylaw that would apply to any residential development anywhere. I mean, that's typically how it's done. But I think you just need to tell us, you know, if you really want the housing, it, it may not make sense to have the inclusionary piece in here, because what you, I can tell you what will happen, you'll probably discourage smaller projects. That, and that's really, it's a scale issue, you know, someone who does 150-unit development is a very different developer from somebody who does eight. It's just a different breed, you know, so if you're hoping to get a mix, including some smaller projects, I don't think I'd keep this in here, or I would trigger it at more than 10 units. You know, that's the other thing you could do, like Worcester, after all these years, finally adopted inclusionary zoning like last year, and they set the minimum at, I think, 15 units, which is, which, they did it because they did it to want to discourage smaller projects. So you can think about that.
Minimum of 15 units of development as a whole, or 15 affordable?
No, at 15 units, the affordable housing requirements breaker, it applies.
Oh, okay.
So Worcester chose 15 because they did want to discourage small projects, you could say 20.
Yeah. But as I said before, if we captured it to, if we said 20 units, 10 percent had to be affordable, or over 20 units, 10 percent had to be affordable.
You can set it that high if you want.
Is that something we want to do?
And that allows the little guy to put in 15, 18 visits.
Yes, it does.
But it doesn't stop him from making it affordable, though, if they wanted to.
No, they can, they can include them for whatever they want, it's just that, once they hit 20, then they would have to.
Have to.
It also doesn't promote what we're trying to do. If, and then, okay, so let's look at the flip side of that. Here come 30 small developers. Garbage. No.
Yeah, but if we have 30 developers, better than nobody come in.
So this is a really interesting discussion, because some of the communities we're working with want smaller projects. And a lot of it is just their established development pattern, they have smaller lots, they want to allow existing landowners to do some investment up. And others are saying, no, we don't want small projects, because, and you've got a bunch of one-offs, and they're not necessarily connected well. So, you know, it just sort of, I think it really comes down to, what are you trying to encourage in this district? And I would then just say, you've got to be careful, if you don't set a minimum lot area, because you're trying to get bigger, more organized development, you've got to make sure you don't set the minimum lot area in such a way that you end up losing a bunch of parcels that are in the district.
Well, the majority of my parcels right now are big passes in the areas that we...
So according to Sarah, the, you know, the smaller parcels are like 10,000 square feet.
Yes.
So we need to keep that, because if you take it out, you're going to lose those parcels, and then you don't get your zone capacity in the...
Of course.
Yes.
So John, what do you think about the likelihood, from your experience, that we would want larger or smaller?
Well, I think we've laid it out by selecting all these areas in the industrial zone, Judy, we, some of which are a good size. I think we, we are sort of heading towards, a bigger development will be a better development.
Yeah.
And that, you know, there are other areas that are within this, on their own, small lots, and if they come along, great. But I think in terms of attracting developers, they're going to look for a chance to build a
Sure.
more significant size possible project. I think that's, and, and that's why we, the original draft of the district included a lot more small parcels, but we didn't, we didn't want people knocking down the houses that are there now to put up something else, so we took those parcels out of the district.
I see, okay.
That's why I took most of it out, sold that, originally, because of the small areas.
We found the widest continuous, continuous area, because we don't...
Okay. Okay.
I mean, not we, but I think that was kind of the golden ice on satellites and all that.
So you want to put a percentage on it or what's the consensus here?
Percentage, a percentage minimum?
Uh, just a flat of ten percent or over fifteen units, ten percent like Worcester?
Uh, I would probably tend to want to go twenty and twenty-five units.
Yeah, that's right. I would put, anything over twenty would have to be, anything over twenty units, that'd be ten percent affordable.
Two units.
That sounds good.
Two or four minutes, that's not a big stretch.
Well, that's, it's a percentage wise on the developer, that's on a lot they didn't want.
Yeah.
No, but it's something versus saying no.
Nothing, it keeps, it still allows them to smaller, whereas on a smaller
Right.
lot to do something, to put in five units, not have to deal with it. Uh, if they, they're saying they don't have to, though, still.
Right.
They still might decide to, at least we have a restriction or a minimum.
If you're trying to encourage more assembled properties for, you know, irrational multifamily development, what you could do is you can provide a density and or height incentive for projects on five or more acres. So here's the, here's the downside to that is, right now, the way Sarah has modeled this, you're just a little over the zone capacity number that you have to hit under MBTA communities. And don't ask, but my brain is mottled right now, I don't remember what that number is. So the district was kind of designed that way. But there's nothing that says, as long as you cover that base, you could have an incentive for, you know, a minimum of five acres or whatever number you want. You give a pretty significant density and or height or both kick. And you're basically saying, we're going to comply with ten thousand square feet and whatever percentage of, um, open space and so forth. But we really want to encourage a more cohesive development. So if you do that, we'll give you more. That's a policy choice for you guys, but it's something you could do. You're just going to end up over your zone capacity number, but you may not care.
Right.
Height, height is a problem here in this town.
It is, okay.
What's that height point now, thirty or forty?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, okay. So that's like three stories.
Yeah.
Three stories, basically.
See, that's part of the challenge with multifamily development because the developers really want four.
Yeah.
Because they want the density. Just giving you information.
Could do low ceilings.
Yeah. I'm not saying three doesn't get you anything.
No, 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 I'm, I'm into those, is my thing.
We've got four-story buildings, but they're flat roofs.
Right.
And flat, let me go back to the issue. Projects with flat roofs aren't good.
Right, are what?
Kind, kind good. Pitch moves a lot better on a building than a flat roof.
Insurance.
Yeah, but I mean,
Doesn't snow anymore.
It depends on how you write your design guidelines, but I'm not going to drag you down that way. I'm just saying, I mean, you could do it. I'm just trying to respond to what you're saying about wanting a somewhat more cohesive project. Um, so that's an example of what you could do.
I'm for the ten percent or twenty units of one.
I'm nervous about incentivizing smaller developments.
So we've got to stay with the ten thousand square feet because the smallest, right? But you could, I mean, another thing you could do is you could set this up so that if someone wants to do over three stories, they apply for a special permit.
That's.
Because as long as, as long as the metrics in here that are as of right get you to whatever your zone capacity number is, you have some flexibility to do more. So I'm not pushing more height on you, I'm just saying, the developers who do a more, I think the kind of project you're talking about, three stories doesn't do it for them. It's not, I hate to say it, it's just not enough. They want the height. They want it for market reasons, they want it for cost reasons. You know, um, the more walls, the higher the construction cost. So if you make it economic for them to do a somewhat bigger project, you're probably going to get it. But there's nothing that says if someone wants to go over three stories, you could require a special permit. Not advocating for it, I'm just giving you options.
Height is money.
How many, height is money, absolutely. Oh, God, yes.
And we do have a lot of development in towns over four stories. Interesting. There were conversions and stuff.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Go factories and whatnot.
Yeah.
You know, the four stories.
What do you think, John?
The, the ones that we approved on Washington Street, this one Steve Egan built, kind of.
That's a four story.
It's that four stories.
That's four stories.
It is?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was four stories.
This is on the first floor and three stories of apartment.
So thirty-five feet, so you did ten, forty-five feet, you still need a four, four is a tenth foot.
Yeah, but it's not, but they, no, because you've got mechanicals and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, all that, and all that, yeah.
But you could have.
Don't take investments in it.
You could have exception for that. We, we, we did that in.
I think he did that for Steve Egan.
Yeah, but there's something in here further that says, stop allowing on the roof. In my proposal.
Steep bowls and stuff.
Oh, yeah, that's a sample of that.
Yeah, but my thing is if you have, uh, air conditioning use and stuff on the roof, just want it to send back from the width and the length, then it's acceptable to be something on the roof, so you can get your mechanicals up, but.
All right, so what do you want to think about the?
The forty B?
The ten percent affordable.
Call it affordable. Affordable.
And not forty B.
For twenty, for twenty and over, is that what you want?
I think that sounds pretty good. If they're going to go finger or anything, it's going to go with special permit and come on the site plan review anyway, right? John, if they wanted to propose it, they can still propose it.
Propose what?
We've got.
Higher.
I mean, Steve Egan's building, that's a forty-five foot requirement.
But I think you allowed for some air conditioning over.
You're not going to allow the mechanicals over, there's no question about that, but.
So, you know, he was able to get a four-story building in with forty-five feet.
Do you like the building?
Yeah.
It's got a sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brandon?
I have no problem with the height issue. I was just saying, this town in particular may have an issue.
Right, yes, absolutely.
You asked me to build up, build up to the moon for all I.
Right, there's no three feet higher, something is going to be in there.
Pay, pay money and afford to live in a house.
I'm just like trying to, I'm thinking, I'm not a developer, right? But I mean, I've just been around this stuff, problems, I do, I've been out my life dealing with forty feet.
We appreciate your knowledge.
I think, yeah, no, I think particularly in the sections, the, the lots if we put in there, um, four stories is probably, okay, more than that, absolutely not.
Okay, that's fine. That's totally fine.
But you say that.
So if you need forty-eight feet to make that happen, I think that's.
But should we say also on a lot size of certain, size of, a certain size lot or more?
Or the, the development size more than twenty units. Something like that.
Yeah. Twenty units, ten percent affordable, go forty-eight feet.
I don't know that.
So let's separate out what's as of right versus special permit. If, right now, this says you get three stories as of right, you get, you know, ten thousand square foot minimum lot, twenty-eight hundred square feet for each additional unit over four. If you want to encourage assembly and somewhat larger, more organized projects, we could say you can also do, um, I'm just going to make up numbers for the sake of this conversation. If you have a five acre parcel, then your density can go up to, um, uh, twenty units an acre.
You said fifteen.
Or sixteen, it's what I.
Sixteen, okay, that was close.
If you want to go up in order to accommodate that development and also have adequate space on the lots or parking and amenities and so forth, then you get a special permit from the ZBA to go up to four stories or forty-eight feet and forty-eight feet. You could do it that way. So the height always is a special permit. But you could nonetheless allow for greater density on an as of right basis in exchange for a larger parcel. Am I making sense?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I like that, I like that idea.
Yeah.
So is your goal, I, don't laugh at me for asking this question, I have to ask. Is the goal here to try to get some housing built?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, because.
It's also to get, get this through town meeting.
Right, sure, sure.
Where the sentiment will not be.
I understand.
And make the stay down.
Yeah, and, and we're not all coming from, from a similar actual goal. The board knows we have to meet X, we want to do it the best way.
Sure.
In the best spot, which we've, we've, we've got the best area. We've now that town sounded fantastic, John.
Yes, she's bad, yeah.
We didn't want to do what the town is asking us to do. I think that's what they're asking us to do.
Okay.
So we're just trying to accommodate that.
Well, I mean, some towns are trying to write regulations to essentially make sure nothing happens.
No, we don't want nothing to happen.
So this is, wait, this refreshing.
You know, we're not trying to.
No, we're not wanting, we don't steamroll anything. We want to meet our quarters, meet our guidelines, do this right.
So we just want to exceed them.
And, and some of this is going into areas of town that are really underdeveloped.
Yes, it is, I do know. I, I know enough of women to picture like how.
There's an infusion to it, it needs.
So getting.
By it.
I think he's at every jewelry store too.
And he's got a lot.
We have a new one.
A new what?
A new jewelry store.
You do?
Yes.
Is it from Menard's?
It, it's, uh, it's very, it's across the street, but it's somebody that used to work with Menard's.
Oh, really?
Supposedly very good, I never been there, but I'll be back because half my jewelry came, but the necklace came from Menard's.
Alexander, Alexander.
Oh, boy, I'm happy to hear this.
Let's get back, I'll suck.
Sorry.
No, it's all good.
But I think what you're saying, so John, makes it more conducive for the developers who also want to do the right thing.
Yes.
Yes.
Gives them a little bit of a caveat to get something else that they want.
Yeah.
But by putting the affordable housing pad on it, it's a give and take.
Yeah.
I like it.
I like the five acres and more with twenty units.
I can play with this, I can.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mess with this a little bit.
They could go to, uh.
Forty-eight, yeah.
It's still the same with that, if it's going to be that, ten percent must be affordable housing.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, does that work for you, Judy?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, there's one more now. So we want to go section by section now, or is there anything else specific?
I think we could go section by section.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll just go one by one. So we got the, should I just start with accessibility, eh?
Well, don't start with purposes. First page, first page, purposes.
With, uh.
You're tied with a simple statement.
You are, okay.
Okay.
We're not, we're not running for office, we don't want to do well.
I thought all that we just discussed was under purposes.
Well, so the only reason I would just say, you might want to think about this a little bit, is we're saying to the Z, to the ZBA, you can write a special, special permit under certain circumstances. And so, you know, John, I don't know how you guys think about this, but sometimes the ZBA really, the half they can, for, where they can hang their hat is, but this is consistent with the purposes of the district. So, you know, you might want to say a little more, you don't have to. But some towns are kind of saying things about wanting to provide more housing choice, or wanting to encourage affordability, or encourage, you know, a, a parcel assembly, whatever. Um, and so it really is just, I'm looking to you guys for guidance.
Yeah. That's when you come into verbiage, which is not my thing, so.
Which you said about, um, options, I don't know.
Housing choice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that kind of is vague enough.
Yeah, it is, it is vague enough.
Yes.
That's the thing, vague enough to be manipulated in the wrong way.
No, it's vague enough that it's, that you're trying to do a little bit for everybody.
We're construction guys.
I'm not trying to get out of doing anything, you know.
Bargain.
I just think that feeding loopholes.
Do you want to say something more specific?
No bullshit.
We're, we're not feeding, we're not trying to beat anything by making that rule of the affordable housing.
Oh, no, we aren't.
Right, but we're doing it in this.
We put the loophole in and it will get exploited.
Well, well, in order, the other way somebody can kind of do a loophole on this is if they go apply for a special permit. Because the as of right rules are the as of right rules. If they meet the as of right requirements, they have to get an approval. The law is very clear about this, it's as of right. So there's no.
They pull an interval, somebody's dropped the ball on an iron.
Hmm?
They pull an interval and try to get something through that somebody on iron dropping the ball and not making sure they did what they're supposed to do.
Right.
And we're pretty good at following rules. The soap's pad.
It's, it's really, it's just a policy issue for you guys. I mean, you can keep it as simple as I've already drafted it. I can add some provisions if you want.
I have, I have no problem as well.
Okay.
No.
You all right, it's just a simple.
But then again, like I said, I don't mind, the words are not my game, so.
We, you're going to leave it the way it is, there's.
I'm finding the way it is.
Well.
Whatever you want.
I have the sentence that says, is to provide multifamily housing development. They think it's, I think it's threatening to the voter. Because I think the voters are going to look at it as it's all going to be affordable housing.
Well, this is, this doesn't say affordable, this is multifamily.
I know, but.
It's got to say multifamily.
This was a.
That's been done.
That's the, the law says multifamily.
Right, but it could say, provide for, what was it that you said?
Multifamily housing.
Yeah, but you said.
Housing choices?
Multifamily housing options.
Yes, did say that. Because a lot of you just understand it's multifamily, but.
No, I, I totally get this multifamily.
Yeah.
But my fear is a multifamily housing development can sound scary as hell.
Overwhelming.
Exactly, exactly. It shouldn't, but it can.
I get it.
But the option makes it a little bit more powerful. Yes, I know, for you guys.
No, I.
I'll go with that.
Yeah, I'll go with that.
So say this comes up, someone says, what are the options?
Yeah.
What are the options?
Look in here. Spell that one.
Options, the developer.
Because it could be a three-unit development, it could be a hundred-foot unit development.
Right.
Those would be options.
And it can be four-story with a variance.
So only for building, okay.
But it will require that over twenty units, it has to be a percentage.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once it's written, you're going to be able to.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be in here now.
The role of that pad, open the pad more like a mission statement, in my opinion, to one year hold.
But I'm trying to be the devil's advocate and I, I don't have a problem with the way it's worded, but I'm trying to think. Your voters, the voters are going to see this and think, oh, it's all going to be.
So why have forty feet developments now, let it out?
Think that anyway.
Well, yes, but if we say options, it's more.
I, I think that's a good wording, Jen.
Yeah, I agree.
No problem, that is true. Sure.
All right.
So with that, you can just bump to applicability, which is on page two.
All right, see, that's where I was at. I thought the first, I thought all the beginning was purpose.
So that's a real simple, applicability is just, it, you know, it recognizes the district and says the district boundaries are in accordance with a map, which I'm sure you guys have been through this before, but.
It's going to be updated.[1656.61]
We need to, so there needs to be a map that is amending the zoning map. And that is the geography that constitutes the district is what the map will be. Um, are we making that map for you? I, I have no idea what the capacity is yet.
This is Kathy.
Kathy.
Oh, hi. Sorry.
We're making the map.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted.
Make it into the whole town.
Yeah.
We'll put it right here.
But it's only going to be, I mean, so we already have a GIS version of your existing zoning map, and I don't even know if one exists. So what this map is going to be is just basically, um, the outline that, of the district that Sarah mapped. And we're going to put a title on it, you know, proposed MDG zoning district with a, holding it on.
That's alright.
Um, with a date on it, because the map has to be identifiable and all of this has got to be on file with the town clerk at least two weeks before you hold your public hearing.
Okay.
And certainly before the warrant closes. So, um, but I mean, this is what was modeled and this is the basis on which I, I proceeded.
Well, but that's fine.
We can do the note, it's fine.
Yeah, that'd be.
It's just that I, I won't, it won't be laying on the existing zoning map. It's going to be based on the.
At least we can see it.
Huh?
At least we can see it.
Yes, I mean, it'll be sufficient for identifying the bounds. Um, so that's all that applicability piece is, is just, the provisions you're going to see in this section of bylaw apply only in this area that's on the map. Judy, just.
Good.
Yeah.
Kathy is our assistant town administrator.
Hi, Judy.
Hi.
I can mail with you.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
I can't mention.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, so do we got next one, affordable housing restrictions or we call it acres like that?
So. Yeah.
Okay.
Under B.
Yeah.
Can we add something to the fact that MCO D cannot any extent in adjacent zone of districts to comply with MCO D lot requirements, open space, patent setback?
I don't, I don't understand like what you're asking.
I want the develop, I don't want to take residential land out back, three acres and add it to my plot of everything in this new district, but use that as open space for the district. Everything's going to be in the district.
Well, that's, yeah, it's, it's only allowed in the district.
We have a, we have a problem in what then?
What is it?
With people, they're taking highway business, putting, um, residential behind it, combining the lots and saying, putting Carlos on it.
Is this because you have split, split zoning, uh, lots divided by zoning district boundaries?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, see, this is, this is following parcel lines. You're not going to have that problem with this district.
Right. But somebody could buy the lot next door and add to it.
But they're not going to, they'd have to, a meeting would have to change the zoning district boundary.
No.
Yes, because.
It, it's.
No, the provisions of this district apply only in the area that is encompassed in the map.
They can't, can't create a new split.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, we, we've had problems.
Okay, but that's because you have split lots. This is not split lots.
Okay.
Okay.
Should we put that in there?
No, 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 don't over, I'm telling you, don't, don't overcomplicate this.
Okay, then, yeah, don't write over and imply.
Jesus, that's all we need.
In soon.
Yeah.
It says building permit is issued by the project approval committee article, provisions of the other land district are not applied to the land shown on the site.
So, yes, so.
Okay, what happens if that, that one gets built? Can that, does it revert back?
They'd have to come back and change the cycling.
No, it never gets built.
Right.
Somebody comes in and wants to do industrial lot, the zone that was for, um.
But there was no building permit.
No, no, but can I go back to the underlying district?
If I didn't get a building permit?
I got a building permit.
And then I never did anything with it?
Didn't, never did anything with it.
What kind of dumb developer is going to do that?
Had.
Sorry.
Whipping once.
It introduced me, financially, we've had a lot of developers come in, they pulled the plug on the development because it wasn't affordable.
But the building permit has to be active, activated within a certain area.
Right, but what happens if it doesn't? Does it stay with the new district or can I go back to the underlying district?
If the building permit lapses, what do you think the answer is?
It's very fast.
There's no longer a building permit.
No, the permit, but it says.
Right.
Yeah, the requirements of the underlying district.
No longer apply because you're going to, you've activated a building permit. If the building permit lapses, that provision goes away.
Not away, that could be.
Well, just trust me on this. If the building permit is no longer valid, then, then there's no building permit under which to build in this district.
They'd have to start all over.
They'd have to start all over.
Maybe it's underlying of the overlay.
If the building permit lapses, they no longer have permission to build under this district. That's easy.
The district doesn't change the permit.
Yeah.
Twenty-six five.
Right, got it.
They may disagree.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for A through E? I'll take that as a no.
And I'll just change ZBA throughout.
Yes, please.
So the, um, the affordable, the definitions, you know, those are just here in case, I, you know, in case you wanted to include the, um, the affordable housing piece. And, I'm sorry, you ask a question?
Uh, if it's affordable housing, can I revert back to market rate housing at some time?
They'd have to have the restriction undone and that's a challenge.
Okay, so it goes with the property.
Goes, absolutely goes with the property. Yep.
And that's the ten percent.
Now, if you give federal.
Maybe toward the ten percent.
Okay, just ask them.
But on a forty E, after you pay up the federal, whoa, you can put it to the market rate?
Um, not if the comprehensive permit's written properly.
Okay. Because I've seen it done.
Well, fine, those old comprehensive permits, yeah, they did lapse, but a lot of them did. But today, no one writes a comprehensive permit that way.
Okay.
Okay. Any other question on affordable housing restrictions? No? Affordable unit? Questions?
So some of these commercial uses that are in here, we're just assuming that you would want to do mixed use.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We'll just take them out.
Okay.
So working goes, space goes, mixed use development, mixed use development goes because we don't need that revolution in this district. Um, probably want to keep structured parking here, because that would be, that could be an important accessory use to a development.
Um, is that the one that talks about, I had a question about, um, the requirements for structured parking? The fact that it has to be covered.
Um, we'll get there. But this is, structured parking is just simply you can have a structure for parking either connected to the building or separate from it.
Okay.
Okay, but in this, oh, undistructured pro, yes, parking does say.
Oh, yeah, it's covered parking, I'm sorry. That's a structure. Otherwise, it's surface parking.
So it's not required to be covered?
Oh, no, but if you're going to do structured parking, that's what, it's just the definition that says if you're doing this, that's what it's called.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, now we're not using, uh, mixed use, so this might be new, but packing in the development don't can only be used for the development, it can't be used for anything else. Should that be written into it or?
Yeah, you already have that in your parking rights. I mean, I can.
Do I sound like milk and meat at a park?
Yeah.
I, I didn't.
That's not it.
So it's accessory, so it really is accessory to development, but I'm happy to add that clarification.
Yeah.
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 Yep. That's fine.
So then we got the permitted accessory use outdoor recreation uses.
So sixteen point four, you cross out mixed use development.
Yes, yes.
Sixteen point five permitted accessory uses. Yeah. Any questions or?
Hold on a second.
A and B?
Yeah, those are accessory to the multi-family.
Ten score.
Pretty straightforward.
Pickleball. Are we all good on that? Permitted accessory uses, everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so sixteen point six, density and dimensional regulations.
So most of this comes right out of the model. Um, you know, the, the setbacks don't, I think the setbacks may actually come out of your existing zone. Um, but the lot coverage, open space, those things are really right out of the model.
But we had a step back that was concerning me, hold on one second.
Sure. Yeah, that front, I mean, any of those setbacks can be reduced and actually you probably do want to reduce the front setback if you're not, the, to find out if this is saying later in the bylaw is that you don't want parking in front of these buildings.
Yeah.
And so if you're going to say that, you lose your strength of front setback.
Uh, I have a problem with that.
What's, what's that?
Because if I have a hundred-foot lot, hundred feet, my ten thousand square feet, and I put three units on it, I don't have enough room to get parking behind the building. If I set the building back twenty-five feet from the street, I can have some parking in front of the building.
That's a problem an engineer needs to solve. Your engineer and your architect need to solve the problem of how are you going to fit this building on the site and not have parking in front of the building? You should bring it up to as close to the street as you can and allow for an access drive to access the parking in the back.
I disagree with you, but that's okay.
That would all fall on the site plan approval, correct?
But that.
Yeah, but we ran into a problem.
That all fall on the site plan approval?
Well, but if we're saying as a rule, you can't have parking in front, which I don't necessarily agree with either. Um, but if you, if you're not going to have fifty-foot front setback.
Yeah, I would bring it forward.
Yeah, so I think you need to decide where.
I would bring it forward, so you provide an improvement in the back for the parking.
So what, would we recommend twenty feet?
That was twenty, twenty to twenty-five.
At least you have a little bit of grass in the front, whatnot.
Yeah, I mean, you want some kind of.
We'll cut it in half to twenty-five and fifty?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's not.
Maximum is twenty-five.
Minimum.
Minimum is twenty-five. Excuse me, let's write.
Right, that's not.
We sometimes write minimum and maximum setbacks, and you're right, you want to say, you want to say minimum. Alright.
So make that fit twenty-five minimum.
No problem.
Anything else on permitted accessory use?
John, we could provide a care special permit to allow the parking out front. Do you want to do that?
I guess there might be circumstances.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Special permit relief is good.
Yeah. Now we get down to.
Wait a minute, I have a question.
Sure.
And it maybe moved, I don't know. Currently, yeah, there's a lot of condos being built.
You do?
Um.
That's all they built.
That's all they built, because there's no bylaws behind those, but that's another subject. Anyway, they use the housing setback, which is forty feet. And in some, some of the developments, it shouldn't be forty feet. They're practically sitting on the road. Um.
With parking out front?
With parking out front of the units, it is, it is, it is.
Yeah.
Exactly. So I, I want to be sure I understand what we just did. Is this going to avoid that? I realize that in the industrial area, they're not really on a street. They'll be creating a street. But some of that industrial area is facing Essex Street. So, uh, we just make it go from fifty to twenty-five?
Well, by, uh.
Surface parking shall be located to the rear side of the principal building, not with between the minimum setback. And, um, not between the front building line and the Essex Street. That's what it says when you get over to off free parking section. So that would not happen, but then you have to provide enough space behind the building to actually accommodate the parking to the rear or to the side. So how much footage is going to be from the street to the front of the first building?
Well, this right now would be twenty-five. And it was fifty?
Yes.
It was fifty, but you, but you are going to have a problem accommodating a rear parking if you do that.
On a small lot.
Yeah.
So do we say that, um, on a lot smaller than an acre and twenty-five is acceptable? A lot larger than an acre would have to be fifty feet setback? Is that possible?
I just don't know why you would do that for the example I gave you.
Because some, on a busy street.
Yeah.
Twenty-five feet is pretty tangled up to the street.
But all you're going to have between the building and the driveway is landscaping or just front yard amenities. And vegetation, you're, and you know, you would have street trees and so forth. Um, so I don't know why that would be a problem.
Twenty-five feet from the house, half of that to driveway, well, one parking spot, still leaves another fifteen, thirteen feet of grass to the house or front porch.
I just don't like the idea of a large multi-family construction to be that close to the street.
Because I've got a four-story building, I don't want twenty-five feet from the street. I want, I want it fifty feet from the street if I got a four-story building.
Exactly. I mean, if you're building up substantial, because then you're sitting, it's like you're sitting on the street and when you, Essex Street's a pretty busy street, when you're trying to take a turn or come out of that, it doesn't give you enough.
Twenty-five feet's pretty good distance.
These are three-story, these aren't like three-story buildings. Well, they might be four, well, by special permit, yeah.
But it's still from either the door.
You know, perhaps we got, you know, the lots that I say on the south there, we don't mind those being close to the street, but Essex Street is a different story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so maybe if, uh, it is, it's four units or less, um, close to the street and four units more further away.
Because I think, like you think about eight seventy Auburn Street, we're arguing about it being at least thirty feet back for that.
Right.
The one next to us, uh, eight seventy-seven Auburn Street, I don't believe it's forty feet back and it's the ninth year because they park in the front of their units.
But that's, you wouldn't be doing that here. I'm hoping not. That's what, that's what the regulations say.
You were putting it in, so it has to be rear parking.
Right.
Right.
So it would be.
Not front, frontage.
Unless the ZBA wants.
A special permit.
Right now, it's no front yard parking.
Right.
And I see that to be a real problem on a small lot. So that's why I think it should be.
Then special permit.
Special permit.
If they want relief from the requirement for a rear side yard parking, we can write a special permit and they can ask for a special permit.
Yeah, because, but you know, if I put it four units or less, would that work or?
I think it's a question of, you just don't want the building separated from the street by cars.
Okay.
It's an urban design question. So I, it's fine to write into this a special permit to, you know, waive that requirement. I think that's, if that's what you want to do, that would not be unreasonable. John, are you all right with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, I'm, I share with Wayne a little concern about twenty-five foot setback. Not enough.
I also quit you the six feet from the street.
I mean, it's, they can't give land away because they can't do anything with it.
Yeah.
So you really have to think about the economics of this.
It's only twenty-five feet, there's no, it's probably, it's really grass.
It's not so much, it's landscaping, it could be a plaza, it could be, you know, better for the amenities. I mean.
But twenty-five feet.
For developers, not to do this.
It's not so much the, the green as much as the getting in and out and outlet, you know, which I know is kind of, I mean, feel good when I do to get in and out.
Well, just.
Okay.
That's, that, you know, we deal with.
Yeah.
Safety issue.
Any comments?
Yeah.
Special guest, he has a special permit, yeah. Were you, anything else?
Well, your exceptions for the vertical projections from the roofs.
That's what I'm going to do next. They're saying, you might also make a couple of things also permitted accessory uses. Anybody have any other questions?
We're good with, with the twenty-five and then?
Twenty-five foot setbacks, special permit, that's why.
Yeah.
Despite the.
Okay.
Alright, so exceptions. Number one, vertical projections, obstructions.
Do we need tanks, towers, steeples, chimneys?
Those are just standard exceptions. They're just standard. The point is it's non-livable space.
Yeah.
That the developer may need to accommodate on the rooftop.
If the building needs to function, you got to put stuff.
That's right.
Well, yeah, but.
There'll be a Wi-Fi tower these days.
Yeah, I don't want a Wi-Fi tower. Like, everybody has a Wi-Fi tower in their living room.
Right. It was just.
Okay.
You know, then our number two, the, the zoning board may even wait, there's some setback projects.
What's that mean?
What is the zero?
Zero watt line.
Townhouses, that may be on separate lots. If someone wants to do a townhouse development where each unit is actually on a lot divided by zero watt line, then you just want to be able to provide for that.
But I think a ten thousand square foot or part to minimum, so I can't put two townhouses together.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
You can cut, if I've got a hundred foot five inch.
Do you want to provide for zero watt line or not? That's all I wanna know. Because some developers prefer to do zero watt line. If you don't want zero watt line, we won't provide for it.
Wouldn't they just combine the properties into a single lot?
They would, they would be condo.
Yeah.
If you don't have zero watt line, you have to some form of ownership, so if the land is owned in common, it's gonna end up being a condominium.
Yeah.
Right, but, but if it's individual lots, then it doesn't meet the frontage without square footage.
You can waive that for a zero watt line project.
It's, yeah, the, the provision is, um, saying that the planning board would say, okay, you can build your townhouses and it affects the setback, it's not a frontage, and it, and it's on a way of as...
Yeah, it's zoning board though, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
You have to be separate utilities.
Do you want to provide for zero watt line or not?
I don't think so, cause it really is.
Yeah, I know, but it's up to the board.
Okay. That's easy to get rid of.
Yeah, so taking on number two.
Yep.
Okay?
Yes.
Alright, so now we're at B. More than one residents, accessory building, construction shall be allowed on a lot.
Right. Because you may have to do that.
Yep, yep, yep. Alright, sixteen point seven, seven, affordable housing. Any questions, A, B, C, or pending numbers?
Any wording that refers to mixed-use development, like in the introductory sentence.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, John.
Uh, T says, anyone going on that, up to?
Up to.
Sixteen point eight. Oh, sorry, oh.
It says planning board town council, is that town lawyer or is that town council?
The town attorney.
The town attorney, okay, I'm just asking a question.
The town council's the town attorney.
Okay. What town council is?
No, we do annually appoint her about, so.
Yeah, so it's just, you wanna make sure that your town attorney has looked at the, you know, the section.
Okay.
If you don't wanna do mixed-use development, then that whole next section can just go.
Sixteen point eight's eliminated.
Yeah, that's fine.
So there we go, sixteen point nine, development standards?
Which will become sixteen point eight in the next round.
Yep. Nope, right? Any questions on the A, B?
Yep.
Pending your numbers, only.
I got just one question on the two. Uh, it's a twenty-foot buffer between industrial and residential of this mixed-use development.
So, I wanna give you some, you, you need to do this.
I understand, you're asking on which property does the twenty feet have to be, the industrial side or does that have to be on the residential side?
So, it's basically saying the mixed-use development cannot be located closer than. You're not regulating what happens in the underlying district, you're regulating what happens in this overlay.
Right, I understand that.
Right, so it, this doesn't regulate the industrial use?
No, timeout. Right now, I put it on the, in the overlay district.
Yep.
I got an industrial property next to me.
Yep. I may not be able to build.
He's already there.
The industrial property's already there, I may not be able to build a multifamily development.
It's in the overlay district.
But if I can't meet that setback requirement, then I'm not.
My question is, the twenty foot goes on the new development, doesn't go on the?
It's a directive in this overlay that a multifamily development will not be located closer than X feet to an industrial use. It just doesn't regulate the underlying district, ever, any activity that happens in it.
Well, then how can I put anything in?
You may have a problem.
Because I have an industrial area and I'm putting, making a new lot to
Okay, timeout, I wanna just give you some background, just, everybody needs to just, you need to hear this. Um, the first bylaw that was approved by the Attorney General's Office was in Pembroke. Are you, are you up on this at all, have you seen any of this? Okay. So Pembroke put their 4A district in a place that makes absolute sense to me, cause I live in Duxbury, I know like where this property is. It's a tired little industrial district, kinda near Route Three. And Pembroke looked at it and said, you know, this would probably be a logical place, this, it's changing over there, this forty B's, there's commercial space. And, and so, the AG's office gets this and says, well, wait a minute, you know, you just gotta look at the underlying zoning, you guys allow adult uses? You allow CBD stores, you allow, and by the way, the state can put a solid waste facility in any industrial district. So, no question, the AG probably went on, went beyond the sort of typical review of the Attorney General's Office for for form, for, you know, consistency with 4A or whatever. But she raised these important points, and she essentially directed Pembroke. She proved their zoning, but she said, you guys need to amend this. You need to consider these amendments at your next town meeting. So, town council looked at it, it was a friend of mine, and she said, this is nuts, you know, she's gone too far. But I think to the planning world, it was like, we need to be talking about this, you can't you would not allow a single-family home in an industrial district next to a, an adult use, you would not do that, right? So why would you allow multifamily? It's a fair housing question, so you've got to provide some separation in here. I'm just telling you, you need to do this. And it's a murky thing, because a lot of towns, their, their train station is in an industrial district, think about how this, how this all evolved, right? These were railroad tracks that were there since Jesus was born, and you know, it's like you've got these industrial zones. And now you've got, you're trying to put housing there because the law says that you have to have the housing near a train station if you have one. But you've gotta think about the potential for a use conflict. And where are you asking, where are you putting this housing and what's it gonna be next to? So, I can't go into this, I can't use this district to change the rules in the underlying zone. I can't do that.
It's sorta like...
I have to apply it here.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's sorta like the condos that are next to the Regal Building, that is now gonna be the cannabis facility?
Yeah.
Would they have built those condos if it was cannabis to begin with?
So, this is just saying you have to have a buffer, and it's gotta be vegetated, that's all it's saying.
Yeah. It, it, it has to be on the property
Yeah.
that we're talking about.
That's correct.
Within the development, yeah.
Within the development?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's, that was my question.
Well, it would have to be, because the, this overlay only applies to development that's happening in this district.
Right.
Okay.
It's not, I'm saying they can't gas pro variants to these eighteen.
I don't wanna talk about variants.
I'm just saying that, you know, that's...
But, you know, it's a real murky issue that I think we're all having to deal with with these 4A districts, is well, what do you do if the underlying zoning is industrial? And, oh, by the way, I mean, Rockland's gone through this, Rockland is actually not doing an overlay. They're gonna propose a whole new district, because they've got so many use conflicts that they would end up with.
Yeah.
And they don't want it, so they've gone a different direction.
They got empty land.
They're putting it into the...
They got empty land in Rockland.
It's a different story, I'm not saying we choose to do that, I'm just saying that that's the point they reached, was we're just gonna get rid of this problem.
Alright.
They have land though, to the
Yeah.
To the after.
So, well, we good with number two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everyone's good there. So, C, sidewalks, internal walkways, and landscaping. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, any questions, comments? We're good as stated?
Uh, one second.
Nope, nope, okay.
Just qualitative design stuff.
Yep.
I'm just reading the way this is written.
Oh, okay, sure.
Okay, I've got a question, um,
Yeah.
on a town street, there's a sidewalk and a three-foot buffer, town right-of-way, is it on the property? Down the property, the sidewalk, is it a town street?
I think the word gets, it's a...
If there's an existing sidewalk, is that what your question is?
Yeah.
All this is saying is, that there's gotta be some reasonable separation between the sidewalk and the street. So, if someone, if there's an existing sidewalk there, there must be some separation.
No. Sidewalk's right on the street.
We have a lot of that.
Yeah, there's a lot of that.
Did that, just separate it by?
Especially, you know, it's... Essex Street right now.
Yeah.
Unless pre-existing conditions make it infeasible or with structures, supersizes, public, they're all, they're all clear. So, it, okay.
Have you ever changed that in the times that you've written these? Have, have you ever written that piece differently?
Probably not, right?
A little bit, I mean, we sometimes had a different buffer.
Okay.
What about, I mean, you're trying to think about the town, you know?
What about there's no sidewalk? Does this mean they, they, they?
They're not for the side, they should be, they require for the sidewalk.
You wanna have pedestrian, you know, access, I mean, controversial.
Yeah. The intent of this district is awful.
Yeah, right, no, I get it, but we don't conform in a lot of places.
Uh, the sidewalk should be required, you know, sidewalk.
Okay, I'm glad it is. Okay.
Alright, so we'll move on to D. Off-site parking development.
There's one through, yeah. There's one point five spaces picking up for, for, yeah.
Um, that is what's in the model. So, let me tell you a little story about the model. The model severely penalizes you for more than one and a half spaces per unit. So we're gonna have to remodel this whole thing. And, I think Sarah was, I think Sarah's final memo made that clear, that it's one point five unit, five spaces per unit.
Yeah, can we force three-bedroom units?
You cannot change parking based on that.
No, 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 I'm just saying, on the development, part of the problem we have today is we're going to build fourteen hundred two, two-bedroom units. Can we force some of these hotels to make a three-bedroom unit for families?
Certainly not, so.
No.
No?
No, it's, you cannot put restrictions on the size of units, number of bedrooms, you can't do any of that.
Okay, cause that's going against what we're trying to do this.
I understand, um, there's controversy about that in the planning world too, but
Yeah.
they've been really, the guidelines from housing livable communities are really clear, you cannot regulate this stuff.
So, I mean, I, I had some concern about that requirement, just because it's not consistent with the way we state parking requirements
Yeah.
in the common bylaw, would we do it
That's why I...
per bedroom basis, rather than a per unit basis?
And you cannot do that.
Okay.
They will tip, they, they won't approve us.
That's all I needed.
John, that's exactly why this says you gotta comply with parking requirements except as follows.
Yeah.
Because they will not approve parking spaces based on number of bedrooms.
Okay.
Alright, moving on.
To use the train. Pardon me, no, you want them to use the train, you have to need, but, yes.
Moving on to E, bicycle parking? Questions?
No.
Okay. F, buildings. Questions one through seven?
Yeah, I mean, I have concern about, uh, putting in some design standard stuff, I'm kinda surprised that's allowed.
Oh, yeah, they actually want to see that, so that it's not in design guidelines that are outside zoning by law.
Oh. Yeah, well, I, we don't have for our regular cycle and review, we don't have design guidelines.
Right, right.
So this is, this is good in a way, but I'm, yet I'm surprised that we're allowed to do this.
No, you are allowed to do that, and, I mean, you gotta think about, you're trying to foster an environment here.
Yeah, we don't want caste system housing.
Yeah.
Like, there's the poor one and there's the nice ones.
Yeah, I mean, I saw multifamily development
That's how I hear that.
in a suburb town near here a couple of days ago, but frankly, it's just hideous, and there's like no articulation on the front facade, it's just, it's just blank. With someone, it's like, no, you don't want this. When you're trying to promote really higher density in an area, and you gotta think about what it's gonna look like. I guarantee you, if people see a crappy-looking project go up, that's gonna upset them more than the development itself.
We have one.
Looks like, yeah, very bad.
Yep.
But...
Okay, I've got a question on number five.
Yes, sir.
The building's ninety feet, no more than ninety feet. If I have a parking lot that's twenty-four feet wide, then I have two parking spaces, then I have some green space, a building could be more than ninety feet of that?
It's a design challenge. If I know I have to have a, a maximum separation of ninety feet, I may not put parking in there. The point is that you want, you want it to be clustered, you don't want stuff that's separated to a point that all of a sudden you lose that, that sense of a compact development.
Yeah, I'm just bringing up a whole question. Hey, what happens if the lot is, for a better word, I've got a pond in the middle, and I want two buildings on both sides of a pond? And it's about ninety feet between, the pond's ninety feet wide. And it's just a, a money retention basis or something. It's just a question, I'm not gonna...
So bear in mind
There could not say that too long.
There is a waiver provision.
Is there? Okay.
Yeah. And I actually did not do the citation right, so, uh, I need to correct that, there is a um, a waiver, the ZBA would have general authority to waive provisions of the development standards, just that piece that would interfere with the project, so I'll make a correction here, um, that's my stupidity.
And also, number five, planning zoning board from planning board.
Yeah, I'm gonna do a surgery, this place. I was so tempted, when I worked on this, to just write ZBA, cause I thought, this is a town where everything's done by the ZBA, so I thought, nah, I'm just gonna leave it to the planning board, they should do some review, cause that's what planners think, right, so But anyway, there is an intent here, all of you, for the board to be able to make reasonable waivers of development standards, which is kinda different from waiving dimensional rules, you know, dimensional rules create more development opportunity. This is, you can't quite make a ninety sev- ninety-foot separation work, you can't quite, you can, you can get a waiver from that. And it's really up to the board, but...
Okay, and then, um, F?
Yes.
Uh, if we're going to the limits, uh, how can we have steep gables and stuff like that?
Where are we, just help me?
Number seven, yeah.
Oh, uh, I think that falls under mixed-use.
Zilson, yes, that's gonna be totally, it was...
Okay, sorry.
That's alright, it was ours.
Okay, that's alright, let's go.
So, any other questions on buildings, one through six, eliminating seven?
I'm good.
We good?
Yep.
Pedestrian lighting?
Yeah, this is, this is important safety stuff, I mean...
A through D?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Wait a minute, did we skip G and H?
We can't skip G and H.
Should we?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's okay, so G is just about...
Outdoor space multifamily, yep.
Some outdoor space, I mean, something.
I thought that G and EH were underneath seven.
I, um, I have, one of my biggest gripes with forty B developments is when there's no outdoor space provided, and it is just, you've got people who are gonna live here. And but again, you know, if someone's proposing a project and there's a, a public park right down the street, that would be a classic example of where someone can say to the ZBA, you know, can we get a waiver from this because there's a park down the street? And, you know, you have one of those, it's gorgeous parks, anywhere in South Shore, this town. I mean, people, I don't know if you know this, people come from out of town to walk in that park.
Me too.
It is absolutely gorgeous, so I'm just, that's gonna say a homestead, pardon me?
No, it was designed by a homestead.
I haven't heard that, yeah, it's a beautiful park, it is. Uh, that's feature.
But G, do we want people up on the roof through the public space?
Well, you're just saying the outdoor space could be of a if it's a tight lot, you may wanna do that.
Got it.
What's wrong with a rooftop deck?
With my little kids jumping over the railing.
They're higher up.
Forty-two inches or so.
I, I assume that people, like, are, are making rational decisions about their projects. So
Yeah.
Imagine rooftop decks and like eighteen-story buildings in Boston, it's just, um, not to worry about it.
It's a, it's a, it's a rational...
Pardon me? Yes, yeah, I understand, I'm just saying that...
So I'll eliminate that.
Over the pond, that might be kinda nice.
Say again?
Overlooking the pond, that might be kinda nice. Yeah.
They're gonna be a nice, they're terraced.
Yeah.
They have terrace, yeah.
Then you get fire pits and winepots.
So, next to your lighting?
Any other questions?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, like, H, placement of fixtures, should we limit the height of fixtures? I don't want a thirty-five-foot pole with, uh, LED lights shining all over the place, could we limit it to twelve feet or something like that?
You could, certainly, I think with a light limit on the height, um, for both parking and, uh, pedestrian, if you will. I mean, pedestrian should be low anyway.
Yeah, but I'm saying, in a parking lot, somebody put thirty-foot poles, I think
Put limit.
I think you put for pole limit.
For parking lot, probably not, but for pedestrian area, yes.
Yeah.
They'd be eight foot pedestrian.
Let me, let me look into it, I don't wanna make...
You don't want something low enough somebody to jump up and break it, yeah?
Yeah, you need to make sure you got...
So twelve feet, at least, you're not gonna jump up and have a kid jump it up and break it. That's my opinion.
If they're both advocate, the lower is going to be brighter and straighter.
No.
Than a, than a high, the books down.
I agree, I agree with the height of twelve.
But that also depends on the fixture too.
Yeah.
You know, I can, I can write some additional standards into this if you want. It's a fair question.
I have no problem with that, making it twelve foot. So at least it's over a basketball hoop plate. So I know, like I said, no one's going to jump up and break it.
Yeah.
So if you want to do that, I have no problem with the twelve foot.
Yep.
Or if you have other suggestions, we
Yeah, I want to talk to like a transportation person instead of just get some input on that.
And then on D parking areas, um, the, if I've got a residential unit next to my property, I should keep the light away from his residential property?
Well, yeah, to the extent that you can.
From residential property.
You're on D, uh, pedestrian lighting?
Yeah, B, two B.
Two B.
Two B, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Like, residential property, so when I'm reading that residential property, that's property out of the site, the zoning district. I would think we want to keep it off the adjacent properties in the zoning district because that's residential area, so when I read.
So we've got minimizing spill light on and glare onto adjacent properties.
Adjacent, okay.
Structures adjacent to residential district should direct light away from residential properties and limit off-site light levels. So it's there.
Okay.
Just in the previous paragraph.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Good with one through six. Anything else? Now we're going to pedestrian lighting? Okay, well, I thought we were still going, you're confusing me sometimes, yeah, I guess. So, so now down parking areas, though. Okay, I'm just going by, you know, the waivers.
Yeah, that's what we're at.
So I waivers.
Waivers, Judy, it's a reference to subsection K.
Yeah, that's right, but a mistake.
You're doing the lighting and most of the parking.
I go back and forth and it's too much and then I just lose sight of where I was. So I would lose that.
Right there, I waivers right there. Yep. Yep, yep, so we're skipping right down to right there now. So any of all good on I waivers?
What was just said between John and Judy, that I need to make a correction.
On subsection.
Thank you, I just made a mistake. Thank you, it was a lot of chat.
Is that referred to the entire?
Yes, it's the development standards.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that was what I meant, John. I just thought I covered that.
So that puts us at two forty sixteen ten. MCOD site plan approval procedures.
Uh, should under two B say something about comp comp requirements or is that still the, uh, the order?
Well, the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction over the conservation mission. CBA doesn't, I mean, that's separate.
Okay, but I'm just saying that I guess, does it come from before or after the CBA?
You do come from before us, I think, right, John?
Depends.
Depends on the project.
It's up to the developer.
Sometimes it's, I mean, they don't
I'd say they come first.
Yeah.
Usually I would say first, so you know if you can or can't do something.
I, I want my, my zoning rights in place.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But, I mean, they go to comp comp for the delineation, I'm sure, but.
Yeah.
Okay, and then E?
Yeah.
I want all utilities underground for del- development slasher before units.
Like I agree with that. And I'm embedded underground utilities.
Yep.
That's already required by the zoning board.
It was smart.
Anything more than two units in the town has to have.
Not on the existing street?
No, not the existing, I'm talking about.
Oh, good construction, yeah.
Assets is existing.
Yeah.
Let me ask a question on sixteen ten, site plan approval procedures. So A says it's subject to, uh, site, existing site plan procedures. So I, I guess I'm wondering, why do we have a separate provision here rather than just saying?
So I wanted to go back before I got here tonight. I remember looking at your existing site planner by law and thinking, there's some issues with this.
Okay.
So that's why, it was almost like a forty R, you know, just saying, well, there's going to be a development plan approval process baked into this overlay. And to the extent that a candidate's going to rely on your existing system, but where there's any sort of conflict, I'm trying to like, part of this is like, they have to know they're going to get approved. So there's really no discretion on that. So trying to make this as tight as I could was largely why I did that.
So maybe it should say subject to two forty seven two A. Except for the, I, I, something making it clear that this override seven two A, if there are things that you think need to be done that way.
So
I haven't gone back to.
It's subject to A through D under two forty seven two. I remember looking at this, I remember.
Why do you keep all of them straight?
It's kind of, I'll tell you, every town, at least some of the towns that we've worked with that really wacky zoning, yours didn't strike me as particularly wacky because, you know, it's like, but I've had to really look like I have to look for where there might be potential conflicts.
Sure.
John and I, um.
Like I said, take another look just to see.
Yeah. So, A through D.
And it could well be that we need some additional things.
Looking for the, the page could be probably one ten.
It just could be inconsistent if we say in A, it shall be subject to seven point two A through D. And then in C, we've got decision criteria, which might not be consistent with that.
And those, and because A through D of seven point two do not include your decision criteria.
Okay.
The decision criteria are in E.
Okay.
So there wasn't, there wasn't, I missed this.
Okay.
All right, anything else on two forty sixteen ten, which will become nine? At some point? No?
No.
So we'll go on to two forty seven. Nope, John?
Yeah, D.
Yeah, the
I.
Conditional approval?
Yeah, um, I'm concerned about this, shall do not unduly restrict opportunity, unreasonable costs and economic feasibility and so forth. It's turning it into a a forty B, forty B and kind of giving up control, you know.
I mean, we can just end this at development of nearby properties. Um, if you, so the planning board, the CBA, name those reasonable conditions on approval of site plans and ensure compliance with blah blah, or mitigate any extraordinary adverse impacts to the development on nearby properties, period, and get rid of the rest.
Get rid of that.
Fine.
And in E, development plan approval?
Yep.
Is that site plan approval? I, I guess.
Yeah, so I've been calling this development plan approval. Ah, wait a minute.
Because sixteen ten.
Do you want to call this development plan approval or site plan approval? And the only reason I ask is I think if we call it development plan approval, which may have been where my head was by the time I got to that part, it clearly separates it from your site plan review revision. Um, this is to me, I think this is really a local call.
Yeah, I think it should just be site plan because you're saying MCOG.
Yeah, that's fine.
So just call it site.
That is A.
It's part of the zoning board, John, so it's on you.
Yeah.
That is fine.
Okay.
That works.
All good at sixteen point ten? Which will be nine. Twenty two forty sixteen point eleven, planning zoning board, rules and regulations.
Yeah, so I've been doing it this way. I'm going to just tell you why. I have a thing about zoning bylaws with these very prescriptive, long lists of thou shalt submit X, Y, and Z. That doesn't need to be in the zoning. That's rules and regulations stuff. So I, you've just noticed, I didn't put submission requirements in here. I said the board can have rules and regulations governing submission requirements and procedures. And I'm happy to put those together for you. I, I assume you already have site plan regs, John? Because I can do that for you.
Pretty, pretty minor.
I mean, I, I'd be happy to do this. I've, I've done this before, so.
And it'd probably be worth having something special for, because these are unlikely to be bigger developments.
Yeah.
In, in songs that says we can waive the requirements for smaller developments, you know.
We, we can, we can easily provide draft rules and regulations and you can look at them.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And add draft rules and regulations, but say that the developer may have to pay for us to have an engineer to.
Yes.
Right, that's, that's with the reference to.
Yeah, that's it here. I specifically provided that authority, which you may want to.
Yeah.
So when you make site plan applications now or subdivisions with the planning board, do you have like an outside engineer that does reviews for you?
Yeah.
I mean, who is it? Just, I'm curious.
Ah, who are you?
So we ran into a problem. We had two that we had used. We ran into a problem with one. So now, um, PMP in East Bridgewater is.
Pat Brennan? PNB? Who, who's PNB?
Oh, I can't remember his name.
So Pat Brennan used to be with Aimway Engineers and recently opened his own office.
Yep, they're, um, these people are on eighteen going into East Bridgewater.
Oh, okay, different.
Right after Dunkin' Donuts, on the right hand side.
Okay, just curious. And who's your town attorney?
Michelle McCulley. It's, uh, Murphy, my name is Murphy.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Are we good on sixteen eleven? Anything else? Sixteen twelve appeals.
No.
That's straight out.
All right. Sixteen thirteen, modifications of site, approved site plans.
So I just did this now in all my site plan bylaws, like
Minor, major.
If it's a minor change, it's a major change. Just make it clear how somebody needs to come in and do a change.
Yeah, I just have a point on the five percent or less number of housing units.
I'm sorry.
A change of five percent or less, number of housing units?
It's a minor change.
Okay, but if, if I have, I love to say, fifteen units, if I, five units is a, oh, five percent, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Five percent. So it can't, it can't go up, but it can go down.
Right, zero, I mean, one to five percent. Anything below five percent, five percent or below is a minor change. They go over five percent, then it's a major change.
But that's only down, it's not, they can't go up five percent.
If it's five percent in the number of housing units,
I, I.
I don't know why.
They could go up.
I know what way it's going, they could go up. It's because it's worth it five percent or less. It just means uh, if there are ten spots, right, and you know, you want to make
That's major.
A fraction of a house, you can go up and down.
I mean, I don't want to think, I don't think it wants.
So one, two, three, four, five up, or one, four, one, two, three, four, five.
I don't think you want to say that any, any increase is a major change. I mean, there's got to be some standard for a minor change is a minor change.
Yep.
But for me, the, the units,
Or is major?
The number of units is a, if it goes up, I think it's a major change because we went through a long process of improvement in packing and everything for approval. And then you increase the number of units, but yeah, a hundred unit building, I increase it by five units. If I decrease it, it's less, and it has less impact on the grounds and everything around. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Just to clarify to, um, the, these aren't still going to be changes that have to be approved.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not like they just get to do it.
It's, it's, it's kind of, um, it's a modification, and she would need to.
It's feeling, well, now it's going to need a public hearing in a forum.
Right, exactly.
So minus five gates.
And they'd still have to, if they increase the number of parking units, they may have to increase the number of parking spaces. Or it won't get approved.
So basically, so now you agree, but I don't agree with you on principle law. I know exactly what he's saying. But it's, it's, yeah, that just means that's X, the five to eight a mile.
Anything else?
I think I'm all right. I think I've got.
I think we're good, because of this anyway.
So can we talk about the schedule? I mean, I, I can make these changes this week.
That was my, my next thing. What do we have to do? To get everything ready for May?
So, yeah, ideally, we'd like to make a meeting, so we can call for a session. We don't actually have all three of us.
Do you expect a little annual?
So, yeah, annual, yeah, yes. Um, so for Melissa, what's our public hearing timeline?
Uh, hold on a second, I can pull it up.
So, like, I can just kill one, two weeks before this.
Right, does this have to go before the, um, zoning bylaw committee?
Bylaw study committee?
Yeah.
It should. Uh, but actually, the change to the zoning bylaws, it should be best. Uh, but there, they have a request to call a meeting for the sole, Board of Selectmen to Select or Change area. So they will have a meeting scheduled.
Okay.
I think we're at, we are scheduled that.
You guys are scheduled.
For us.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
They don't have the same public hearing time, but they may make recommend changes.
I'm sorry.
So.
Sorry, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, this like warrant deadline, public hearing deadline, that's like, that's my.
Yeah, that's why Melissa has the full, yeah, public hearing deadline is all that really interests us.
So, um, I'm sorry, I'm trying to click through my emails here.
I'm sorry.
Um, here we go. Okay, so we would need to, the planning board would need to have, would need to vote on and approve a final draft of this on February twenty-seventh.
Now, we're meeting next week too, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Would it be possible to have these for next week?
Yes, I can.
Okay, that would be super.
It applies to two weeks.
If it's any weekend that we think we need, then, um.
I, I can do this really what, twenty into this week or the weekend.
Awesome.
So I'm meeting the thirteenth.
Pardon me?
Our meeting is the third.
Next Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do this. It's like, cool. I mean, if I'm really clear about what you want to change, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the tweak is part of the, this is just this sort of special permit to do more under law. I got to think through how to do that, but, um, but this is fine. You're not asking for huge changes here, so.
Which is garbage and one nation.
Yeah, but that will like, you know, you can do a special permit to go up and do more. Um, I just want to think about how to attract that, but I like that. I think that's cool.
All right.
So planning board needs to vote on the twenty-seventh.
By the twenty-seventh, yeah.
And so whether they have to hold their public hearing?
So if we vote on the twenty-seventh, then we would send it back up to the Board of Selectmen who would hopefully meet on March fifth. Um, and, um.
We have a little schedule, yes, but.
Okay.
Um, and then.
Uh, we, we will not meet on March fifth. It's the, uh, presidential primary.
That's right.
That was right.
Oh, God.
Because we would need it back.
What if we get this next Tuesday?
By the March twelfth meeting. Um, so that we could vote to hold a public hearing on potentially Thursday, April fourth.
Melissa?
Yep.
If we get this and we can approve this next Tuesday.
Yep, or we could even, we could even potentially, realistically, we could meet it, like, whenever, whenever it's ready for us to vote on, we could schedule a meeting and meet, so, you know.
We'll meet Tuesday. If there are small changes and you guys can vote and send it upstairs, we can put a placeholder on the agenda or something.
So just so you know,
Yes.
I will be far away from March twenty-fourth to April fifth. Far away. Totally. Just I like you, I will not be in this building.
I don't see us having a problem getting this next Tuesday.
I've been ungodly sick for a month and I'm going to where there is warm air.
Get one else up and bring it back?
I will not do that.
And I don't believe in the fourth of April, so we won't see it for about two weeks.
So, I mean, I guess I just want to prepare you for that.
Yep.
I can't, if you have a public hearing on the fourth, I won't be here.
That's.
But any of these other, I think if I just have the dates, which you may have laid out in the email.
Yeah, I did. I had sent an email. But again, like, we can
Okay.
Scorch and do what we have to do.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have.
How many is what day?
Six.
Everybody's is May sixth, everybody.
Is it that?
Oh, it's like, no.
Yes, we, we want to accommodate. We'll work around whatever schedule to get it done.
But that's something crazy, I can't say.
It could hurt us just next Tuesday.
I had three town meetings one year on the same night. And I was in Littleton and, um, Andover, and then I had one out in Northfield. I had rewritten town Northfield zoning by law, soup to nuts. And they had the courtesy to call me when I was on my way out there and say, you don't need to come to pass, unanimous. I have done my job.
That's a good phone call.
That was a nice phone call. They were lovely people. Um, so I'll go back and look at that email.
Okay, yeah.
I apologize.
I was gonna say, oh, I can, I can shoot it over to you again tomorrow morning.
Okay, but, but as for next week, I, I mean, I can get these, these changes to you by the end of, by, by, by Friday. Are you half day on Friday or full day?
Um, I'm half day, but I can, I can be reached.
Yeah.
If you could mail it to us.
Yeah, we can be.
Yeah, we just have a long schedule this week. And that's, you know what it is, it's all MTA communities. It's like everywhere.
We've all got springtime meetings.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I do, I have several of them, so.
Judy, what about the, um, the process of having the state review the bylaws?
So.
Is that necessary? Are we comfortable enough to?
Most of my clients are not doing it. I think, I think nobody wants to give them the opportunity. I know Rockland is planning to submit theirs, but most of the towns I'm working with are not. And frankly, I think there's enough issues going on with the ones that passed in the rapid transit communities that And frankly, I think there's enough issues going on with the ones that passed in the rapid transit communities that we don't, so up until Christmas, the staff at Housing and Livable Communities were having office hour meetings for the consultants and the regional planning agency staff, like every three weeks. And it was great, and we had to ask questions, and we found out what other people were asking, and it was like, no one wanted to miss these meetings. They have not had one since. And I have a rapid transit community in the mix, and they get an occasional question, and then they don't hear it a thing again. So as far as they know, they're fine, but I think there's issues going on, because it's February, right? And so I just wouldn't count on submitting it, because I'm not sure you're gonna get an answer.
Okay.
I mean, Sarah's got the model down. I'm not really worried about that. We're not doing anything here that's gonna be a deviation of concern to Housing and Livable Communities. The special permit we talked about, which is to get with OPA, that's not gonna bother them. As long as they can say, these dimensional metrics, as of right, get you to whatever your zone capacity number is, that's the thing that they're gonna be really looking at.
And that zone is totally compact and coherent.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not saying you shouldn't submit it, but I don't want you to assume you're gonna get an answer. That's my worry.
Yeah, because they want it ninety days or whatever.
They want it ninety days, and I mean, I don't know how they're gonna do that, even for towns that have decided to submit.
And worst case comes, worst case, when we pass it, they make you back.
And well, and actually, we told, Chelsea was our rapid transit client, and we told the planning board and the council the night that we were there, we might be there, because we don't know yet what Housing and Livable Communities is gonna do. I mean, I've been hearing stories about, they tell you, it's just about having the zoning, right? But then they start reading the zoning, and they say, well, that doesn't look like a great district, or it's just, that's not what you're supposed to be doing, it's the zoning applied, so.
Planets got a plan.
I hope you don't have to see me after May sixth. That's my hope.
Chelsea's complicated.
Chelsea's very complicated. No, let me do this. So I'll work on this some more. I appreciate these comments. This is good.
Judy?
It's fine. Yes, sir.
You're one of the better ones. We had a great discussion.
Oh, this was fun.
This was fun. This was good. We had agree to disagree, and I love that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming by time. Much appreciated.
Yeah, I was going a few minutes late, I was flying back.
That just gave us time.
Gave us more time to prepare for you.
Alright.
We were talking about things beforehand, so we worked out well.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Yep.
Good stuff.
You guys have other stuff to do it on?
Nope, we already, we called this meeting only for you.
I mean, I can, but just not.
And the captain, and the justice.
It's just how different.
Guys, thank you. Alright, most of you enjoyed it, John.